Start with the Potomac Yard District update. On with me tonight is Kendall. We're excited she's with us tonight. We also have, Kendall is our interim deputy city manager and also our finance director. We have Stephanie Landrum, who is our CEO and executive director for our Alexandria Economic Development Partnership. We have Jimmy Sanderson and Ty Wolford from Davenport. They are our financial advisors and have been for a couple decades, particularly as it relates to our capital program. This is our team of experts that have really been instrumental in trying to articulate and protect the city as it relates to the financial aspects of the potential project that we're going to, that we have been talking about in the public. And this is a little bit of a follow on from the listening session that we had last Thursday. So I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie and then a lot of this would be to take questions and just make sure there's a frame of reference for this topic.
Great. Thank you, Jim. Hi, everyone. We have just two slides with some updates and then we have a number of the slides from the financial presentation that the city manager just mentioned in case we need to reference them if you have some questions. We have added one slide on how kind of the revenues and coverage is modeled because that's a question we've been, we got a lot last week and we've been talking with many members of the community, so we'll share that. But let's start real quickly with the engagement updates. When we, when Jim, city manager, Perjean, sorry, be very formal here. City manager Perjean, last legislative meeting talked to you about an engagement calendar. One of the things that we agreed and said we wanted to do was at every legislative meeting, provide an update. So since our meeting two weeks ago, we have published a schedule of events and have planned them, and those are now all posted on MonumentalALX.com. We've also launched a online question and comment form, which allows us to more comprehensively track and provide responses to community members, but we'll also be able to post all of those comments, questions, and publish them online as we move forward. I know that that's been something that's been productive in other efforts, and so our entire larger city team that's helping manage all of this has, has put that into process. If you go up to our website and you see a lot of these events, you will now see that we have topic-based listening sessions, which we're doing once a week virtually, city hall, city council, town hall, that you are doing hybrid later this week. We are also launching a pop-up series where at community gathering spaces, there will be staff available to answer questions in a more organic setting. And then really starting over the last two weeks and in earnest, starting next week, we are doing community and business group meetings as invited. And so we will be able to publish a calendar of all of those, but you will see us as a team and some of our experts and colleagues along with us in certain venues to answer questions and give presentations on the project as it continues to evolve. So the next slide is an update on, just an update from what's happening at the general assembly level. So on Friday of last week, the 19th, legislation to create the Sports and Entertainment Authority, so sort of the enabling legislation was filed in both the House and the Senate, and so those bills are available for review. They were filed by members, as is traditionally done, members who serve on the Major Employment and Investment Commission, MEI Committee Commission. And so those are Delegate Luc Torian of Prince William County and the Senate Majority Leader Scott Surival of Fairfax County. So that language is available for the community and public to review. We provided links in this presentation and this will be available as part of tonight's record. The language again is the enabling legislation that would form the Sports and Entertainment Authority, so the, the legal entity that would buy and build the assets that we've been talking about and ultimately would be responsible for oversight of the financing and the tax collection as, and if we move forward. And so those are the, those are just the two update slides. As I said, we have other slides here available based on sort of the finance and economics of this deal. We wanted to provide council the opportunity to ask questions of, certainly of me, but, but I think as Jim mentioned, we have our financial advisors, the city's longtime financial advisors also online here with me, and then Kendall Taylor, our finance director, and of course, the city manager in person. And so I will pause there and see how council would like to proceed.
Okay. Councilwoman Gaskins, Councilmember Bagley, Councilmember McPike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Landrum. I have several questions. I think my understanding was that we get to kind of do a deep dive on financing. Before that, I just wanted to make a comment. I did find it really helpful to see the schedule of engagement posted. I know when we last got an update, one of the things I had mentioned was sort of facilitating some other opportunity for residents to either do a roundtable. I think Councilwoman Aguirre said a brainstorming session. I'm not, I'm not sure what the format is, but, but I really hope to see some sort of work session with our residents where we can really hear their ideas and feedback added to that, that schedule. So, so a couple financing questions. So the first one, and, and some of these, I will say, I attended the general assembly town hall on Sunday, and there were several audience questions that I thought we had more information on, and so I just want to make sure I have clarity to be able to speak to this. The first is, can you provide or do we have, do we have a breakdown of how much of the projected revenue is expected to come from ticket sales versus naming rights versus property taxes, admissions taxes, meals taxes?
So I guess I'll explain and then I'll let our advisors jump in if they would like to. The way that we have evaluated this opportunity is we used a third-party advisor, HRNA, which is an economic and kind of fiscal impact professional firm who does this sort of work. And it's a firm that we have used and we have used other firms like it, where we look at what this project, what a project could potentially generate in revenue for us. And so for this project, many of the sources that you just mentioned, admissions tax, sales tax, parking revenues, district naming rights, those are very specific and they're not typical revenues that we have looked at, say, when we looked at bringing a, an office headquarters here, the National Science Foundation. And so the advisor and the model and the report that we commissioned ran scenarios based on inputs from the company that we are trying to attract. So we do have breakouts of what could be generated in those various categories, and I think maybe perhaps if whoever's controlling the slides could, could move to the next slide and one more, maybe I would let Jimmy or Ty speak to this. This is kind of a new slide that we're providing that breaks down those revenues by what's generated by events versus incremental taxes. I'll stop there and let one of the financial advisors speak to this.
Yeah. Good evening. Jimmy Sanderson again with Davenport Company, my colleague Ty Wolford. We're again, our financial advisor to, to the city. This is, one of the things that we looked at was, and, and the state is looking at this obviously as well, we're, we're partners with them on this project. And what we've shown graphically here, and in particular, has given us comfort in the process, is looking at what are the, in the darker blue vertical lines are what we call in private, private revenues, event-based revenues, and in particular, what that is going to entail are admissions taxes, parking revenue, and naming rights. And one of the things that gave us some comfort when we looked at is those revenues are projected to be greater than, in each year, greater than the annual debt service that we're, that we're projecting. And again, these are, these are just projections, and so one of the things that we want to be comfortable with is that we have some cushion when we look at those individual parts of the, the revenue stream. Over and above that, that dark line is what we've, we've shown as state incremental revenues, which is the light blue, and then the darker blue in the middle there is the, the city's incremental revenues. Again, these are all revenues that are specific to that area, not outside of that entertainment district that we're talking about. And that's what Stephanie mentioned earlier, which is that coverage concept, which is important to us. And that, if you, if you look at that line, it's shown graphically, but the, the math is the projections are, in particular, sort of the first quarter of the, of the term, those, the, the revenues that are there to pay that debt service are greater than two times the amount of debt service. So for every $1 of debt service, we're projecting $2 of revenue to cover that. And we've said it in some other meetings as well. We can have those revenues obviously get cut in half, so if our projections were off by 50%, we still wouldn't be calling on all the revenues from the, from the city or the state to pay that debt service. So that's one of the things that we look at to give ourselves some comfort, that, you know, hopefully there's upside to these revenues and that'll just produce more revenue to the city, but we've given ourselves some, some runway for instances where those revenues may or may not be at the projected levels in any given year, and we'll still have sufficient revenues to pay, to pay the debt service.
And Jimmy, I would, I would just add for clarification as we look at this chart too, what we're showing here is related to the, what's being called the project revenue bonds, where we're pledging specific revenues to repay those bonds. There is another financing mechanism that you all likely have seen as part of the, you know, funding package, which are being called lease revenue bonds. Those are backed by the lease payments from the specific teams. That is not being shown here, but that is, you know, a different financing mechanism. The lease payments are going to be contractually agreed upon in a, in a, you know, legal document, that sort of stuff. So I just wanted to point that out because it's not represented on this page. It's separate and apart from the, the project revenue bonds.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I guess a follow-up point on this, this chart, when we look at kind of the other city incremental revenues and the state, my understanding is that so much of the projections or the way this is structured is also based on kind of the development and other things that will be spurred beyond just the arena. Can you talk a little bit about kind of what evidence we have to support that or kind of what factors go into the model to give us confidence that, that those will come about?
And that's a great follow-up. Thank you. And one of the things that I'll add, the, the revenues that we're talking about here are just related to the arena and phase one. So we're not, we're not talking about any of the project development that's going to take place a little bit down the road. We're not relying on those, on those incremental revenues at all to, to cover the debt service. That's going to be, when that comes, would be applied 100% to, to the city for whatever purpose that you have, very similar to what we did with the Potomac Metro Rail Stations, where the city took on that project and ultimately resulted how we thought it would, which is very substantial development throughout the project area that entered to the benefit of the general fund of the city.
Okay. And I think to, to answer this, to answer the second part maybe of your question there, Councilwoman Gaskins, should this project move forward through the general assembly and as the city considers the sort of deal portion of it, the next phase would be a entitlement process where, which would look a lot more similar to things that council does on a, on a monthly basis. And one of the pieces of kind of a work stream that we're beginning to, to talk with the Monumental or the tenant, but really JBG, who would be the developer, not only of the arena, but really of phase one and the phases, would be a development schedule so that we as a city would understand how the buildings that need to be constructed that then generate this revenue, what sort of development schedule they would be on. So that would be, that would be the first piece of information that would be evidence and security that, that the, the buildings that need to be built to generate the revenue would be moving through a process. There are also a number of documents that the city would be entering into, legal agreements with the state, with the authority, with the company, with the developer, that would obligate all of those parties to meet the, the terms of this deal that we're talking about.
Okay. That's helpful. I guess kind of sort of following on that, because I just want to make sure I'm tracking everything. On many of the slides and on the website, I think it talks about how this project could generate more than $12 billion in, in kind of new economic development and revenue. Tell me what that number specifically, is that just the arena or is that factoring in some of the ancillary development as well?
The $12 billion is factoring in all, all economic activity from all phases. So if we go to the slide, keep going, the slide that has a map on it, one more, there we go, one, go back. That slide, yes. The, the $12 billion of overall economic impact that is included in many of the state's kind of more general presentations is the, is the economic impact for all of the development shown here.
And Stephanie, I would clarify that it is net of the anticipated debt service payments that we had just talked about, and the $12 billion is city and state combined.
I have a lot more, but I'll just ask two, and then, because I'm sure my colleagues also have questions. One was related to, there's been a lot of question around like, what is the scale of events needed to achieve the financial benefits here? I know the study on the website, I think it used 221 as kind of the factor used in the modeling and then another 115. Help me understand, are those hard numbers that is like, we don't achieve that, we don't achieve these benefits? Is there, is that a range? But yeah, what's, what's the scale of events necessary here?
Sure. So the, the number that you just quoted, so the entertainment district, as we, as I think everyone knows, but is good to say, it's good to remind, includes two venues. So there is the arena and there is the performance venue that we have talked some about and we'll talk a lot more about, that the city is going to help bring to bear. The arena will host the two sports teams, the Washington Wizards and the Capitals. And then the balance of events that would happen at the arena and the performing arts venue would be a mixture of entertainment, concerts, family shows, sporting, other sorts of sporting events that are not Washington Wizards or Washington Capitals. For the purposes of the HRNA model and fed to us by the company, so as part of their business plan, we modeled 221 events at the arena and 115 events at the performance venue. The model then gives us estimates about revenue that would be generated by events of that, of that size and scale. And so not every event would be full capacity. The variety of events allows for different revenue streams. I'm making this up, but people probably drink more at a certain type of event, say a sporting event than they do at a family event, right? Or I don't know, I don't have a family, maybe people drink a lot at family events. But anyway, there are, there are different revenue assumptions based on the, kind of the mixture of events. What is important for our model is the, is, is the taxes generated, right? And part of what you just heard from, from our colleagues here is that what's going to pay off the debt is a mixture of revenues. So we're just not, we're not just dependent on revenue by, that's created by events. We're, you know, we're mixing the, the obligation and the debt repayment with tax revenue from events, but also parking revenue and also more standard things or reliable sources like the lease payments from the company. And so, yes, we are depending on a certain amount of event activity, and that is something that will be in the performance agreement, but every revenue item has some flexibility in it, and it's the mixture then of the flexibility across all of the items that makes this, that gives us that kind of coverage that we need. And so the numbers that you quoted and that I just kind of fed back to you are the numbers that we included in the modeling.
And just one thing with, and when we talk about revenue, just to be really clear with everyone, we're talking about net revenue. So that's revenue after expenses that we have performed. I think there's been some confusion when we use the word revenue. When we are talking about it, we're talking about net, meaning minus expenses. So we've, we've factored in expenses to operate and to do certain things for, for this venue. So I think that's important. The other thing, when we talked about that $12 billion, which was over a long period of time, we've also modeled the cash flow of the project. And keep in mind what Mr. Sanderson said about the coverage. It's over two times the coverage, which means double the revenue that we need. And the bulk of the revenue that, that covers the debt are pretty standard. Parking for an event, that's going to happen. Admission tax, buy a ticket, it's going to be charged. Those are pretty certain revenue streams, as well as the, the naming rights, which is very typical for virtually every arena these days. So the, the kind of the core revenues that back the debt are some of the probably most certain revenues that you're going to find. And again, it's net revenue, not gross revenue.
That's helpful. And you mentioned kind of the long time horizon. I think another question that has come up, at least in the, many of the 3-1-1s I think we've received, is that, you know, Capital One is 20-something years old, this deal is modeled over 40 years. Can you just talk a little bit about the horizon and how, trying to think of the right way to frame this, but like how we can be sure our, our financial projections will last or work across that, that long of a horizon?
Sure. I'll, I'll give the intro and maybe Stephanie or Jimmy or Ty want to give the detail to it. So this is different than some of the arena and stadium deals that you'll see around the country, particularly ones that have been done over the last decade, in that the thought process that are an arena or stadium ages over time and then deteriorates to a point where it's not successful. Really two protections the city has put in here. One is the non-relocation agreement, which is really, really critical, and that ties to the debt service. The, the second one is, is equally, if not more important, is that unlike other deals, part of the, the funding that we're talking about, part of the protections we're talking about is the, a, basically a reserve or a capital fund that is, is not done 15, 20 years from now, but is done every year to make sure that the facility is refreshed and upgraded, it's got the new technology so that it is, is ready to operate over the, the full period of the 35 to 40 years. Stephanie, Jimmy, you want to add to that?
No, I think that's the main, the main driver, Jim, is that, you know, we're, we are factoring in from the very beginning, establishing those reserves. And so it's not something that, you know, we're planning on punting down the road or having the owners come to the state and the city sometime in the future and say we need major upgrades. The cash flows are currently funding a significant amount of annual funds into a reserve that will be used to maintain the facility and keep it hopefully a state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art facility.
What, maybe one other thing that we thought a lot about and we looked at, at when we studied other cases, was that when there is a difference in ownership between the land and the facility, we found that it was more likely for assets to become maybe obsolete or interests to become misaligned over a longer term. And so we have structured this deal as a singular entity, the authority, which is, you know, a governmental entity run by people who are appointed by both the city and the state. They will own the land and the facilities, and so there will be that guaranteed alignment over the course of the term, always thinking about the best interest of, of the two entities that are serving on that board.
That's really helpful. Thank you. I'll, I'll pause there, let some others ask questions, but you may hear from me again tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gaskins. Councilmember Bagley, Councilman McPike, Vice Mayor Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson, and thank you all for, for being here. Can we flip back to the debt service coverage chart? So I, I want to try to ask a question my colleague definitely asked, and you've already answered, but I just want to ask it another way, in as many ways possible essentially. Is it, is it, is it a fair thing to say that everything above the yellow line is like the, the margin of error essentially before you default? That, that, you know, default occurs below the yellow line and everything above it is, is error potential for, you know, how much we need to cover our debt service? And if, if I'm saying this wrong, correct me, but what I'm trying-
Not default, not default.
Not default, I'm sorry.
It's whether, whether the city has to dip into our own revenue to service it.
What, what I just revealed unfortunately is my day job is involved with, I, I, you know, I own property, you know, affordable housing property, and so I'm, I'm thinking in terms of default on mortgages. But to the, to the pointed hand, I'm sorry. So to the pointed hand though, the, the yellow line is the point at which the city's money, you know, starts to bear that debt. Above the yellow line is the degree to which that debt is covered by new revenue generated by the district.
That, that's correct, yeah. And we don't, we don't ever like to use the words default.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. But you're, you're, you're right. That's correct. And there is one other thing that, that we didn't mention. There will be reserves established at the beginning when the bonds are issued. Stephanie mentioned capitalized interest. Again, that, that sort of gets us through construction to pay interest on the debt in particular, until the project revenues start to materialize. But then in addition to that, I believe there's going to be a year plus, almost two years of reserves set aside. So at any point in time during the, the term of the bonds, if there were ever an interruption in any given year, there are funds set aside that can be used to pay that debt service before the state or the city would be asked to, to make it whole.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And again, I mean, for anybody watching, apologies for this term default. It's, it's absolutely out of place, but, but the, the point I was getting at is the 2.0 debt service coverage is what provides that, that large degree of if you want, if you were concerned about the modeling, that's the comfort level. That, that's the degree of the margin of error, you know, in some way to meet that yellow line. And, you know, so 2.0 debt service coverage, the point these gentlemen are making is that it's, it's significant. It's, it's not, it's not 1.0, which plenty of deals have, it's not 1.2. And so that, that's a deal point that I think hopefully separates us from what we've seen in other scenarios.
And not only does it-
And one, one other thing just to say too, that, that's a minimum coverage too that we, that we've been looking for. So you can see that, that, that actually grows over time, and so it's sort of the minimum coverage that we want to look to is right around that two times coverage level.
Okay. I appreciate that. I don't mean to belabor the point, but I find sometimes it's helpful to say it in, in different ways.
I would also just add, and I, again, there's been a lot of question, are these things reality and real and all that? Keep in mind to, to have debt, there is independent agencies that the city and Commonwealth have to go to that will scrutinize all of these things that we're talking about at the level that is, I mean, these are, these are, you know, the, the typical rating agencies that, that will evaluate this, and I think that's an extra set. But I think this chart is illustrative in that it, it really shows that we're, we're, we've built in several layers of protection. Everything from the reserve that Mr. Sanders talked about to the extra coverage that we've talked about, to the protection on certain performance levels and things like that. So you can see that financially, there are protections in a conservative manner to try to make sure that we never get to a point where we need to provide a coverage on that.
Thank you. And I appreciate the, the question and the answer about non-relocation, about ongoing investment in the facility. These are obviously things designed to avoid some of the, the challenges other cities has faced. And one other item that may have been said, but I wanted to say it again in case somebody missed it or I missed it, is there's also clauses in the, the documents addressing sale of the team. And all the non-relocation, all the lease binding terms would move with any subsequent owner lessor of the space.
Correct.
Okay.
And again, there may be a consent provision about ownership.
I appreciate that. And then this question gets a little bit, a little bit away from financing, but I want to ask it, I want to ask it now, is all of these revenues in year one is ostensibly 2028, assuming all goes a current, to the current planning? Okay. So if year one is 2028, which is five years from now, it's obvious that should this move forward and be announced and, you know, forward and be announced and, you know, plans begin, the the impacts to adjoining areas in terms of housing-related costs and just everybody gearing up for for what is going to be happening will have some effects in neighborhoods like Alexandria, Chililagua, you know, Del Ray, North Potomac, North Old Town, you know, Potomac Yard. And so I'm curious, is our financing process and our negotiation with partners envisioning ways to start addressing those impacts before these revenues will will begin to come into effect in 2028?
I'll take a first crack at it and certainly let the city manager say anything. So good news for us, or fortunate news for us, is that we, while this is a huge project, we have a pretty strong track record of huge catalyst projects. And so we know what the impacts, both both positive and and otherwise, are. And we have some existing programs and initiatives in place around housing protections, preservation, ownership, et cetera. But it is an an issue that we are talking very significantly about with our partners at the state, trying to find more opportunities for, say, housing dollars that might be dedicated or or our area might have priority scoring or or access to alongside this economic development project. And we also are talking with the developer and owners who are involved in some initiatives around housing preservation and housing affordability. And so those are things that we'll continue to have those conversations should this project move forward. We also know, and we, I think we've talked about this a little bit so far, and we'll get into it more at this week's listening session where housing is a topic, we know right now that there are zero housing opportunities on the 70 acres that we're talking about. It's all commercial, right? It's a strip shopping center. It's the Virginia Tech Innovation Campus, and it's vacant land. And so catalyzing any part of Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three will help us in in our goal of just producing new units, period, whether affordable or not, in our goal to, you know, to kind of deal with the supply-demand issue. And so movement, move it forward of the arena, but also then catalyzing immediately Phase One. Phase One contains a significant number of new units, of new housing units. And along with that would come the, our, I always make, I'm not the planner, so I need to make sure I say this correctly. Our standard proffer conditions are around housing affordability, both contributions or onsite development.
The the other thing is, while the project, if it was successful and favorable voted on, would be open, you know, in September 2028, to get to that point, there's significant opportunities for our local businesses, opportunities for apprenticeship components, opportunities that will exist before the construction. And Stephanie and I have been working with our partners on trying to create some of those opportunities, you know, for our local residents, particularly like wealth creation. Opportunities perhaps would not exist because we don't have this type of a project and opportunities for for a different level of employment. And some of that will occur and does occur before the project is actually open.
Okay, I didn't want, I don't know if anybody else on the screen had anything to add on that. Well, I appreciate that, and I would just encourage our our partners at all levels to, you know, to consider pre-year-one, you know, local impacts and how we can plan for those, you know, along the way. And and that that comment about jobs, I understand we're on a financing focus tonight, but as we move forward in listening sessions and and in conversation with the community, I know we've thrown about 30,000 jobs and and but it would be useful, I think, to the community and probably to this council to start to see that broken down into projected bundles. You know, how many of them are part of the construction phases? How many of them are arena-based jobs, which is knowable because an arena already exists, you know, with these services? How many are full-time, white-collar jobs, you know, that will come with the HQ and even at the performance venue where there will be an office, you know? So I'd appreciate seeing, you know, the next presentation or as we talk about, to me, that is part of financing and revenue, you know, the jobs that will be created, if we can bundle or if we can, you know, make separate buckets of those job figures so people understand them.
We have those numbers. I've seen them.
I'm not denying they exist, I'm just me saying like it's it's, okay, let's let's-
Yeah. That, I will say, that is our our fourth, our fourth listening session is about small business and economic opportunities. And so we were, that that is employment, and so that is scheduled for two weeks from this Thursday.
Okay, Councilmember McPike.
Thank you. In an earlier colloquy, you referenced a performance agreement. And I'm curious, what are the parameters of the performance agreement? This is an expectation on our part that Monumental will be producing a certain amount of activity at this site from year to year? Is that correct?
City manager, do you want to take a crack at that one first?
So when we write like a master agreement and a series of sub-agreements that cover different aspects, those are all performance-based. So we will establish via an agreement, written agreement, certain requirements that all parties have to meet. So Monumental, as the operator of some of these facilities, will have a series of obligations that they'll have to meet. The city, we will have obligations to meet. The state will have obligations to meet, and the developer, JBG Smith, will have obligations to meet. Those will be in a master agreement, and those are typically, in my experience, as well as, not just my experience, but what we're doing right now, is to crafting those standards, those those requirements or obligations that will be clear in the in the agreement. And they're, you know, they will be specific enough that we'll be able to determine, because they're via contract, whether they are being adhered to or not. And that's pretty typical for these types of agreements. Probably the difference is, I think we will probably go into a little bit more depth in a couple of these areas, because we have, you know, the fortune of knowing some of the experience of some of the newer facilities and what worked and what hasn't worked.
So in this performance agreement, if we have a scenario where the projections here are more than 50% too high, and we started, we start having to have city or Commonwealth dollars coming to bear to pay some of these bonds, is there a point where for not hitting that performance or revenue agreement, Monumental has to step in?
Yeah, so, and I thank you for teeing up that question. So when we write a standard or an obligation, all agree, these agreements will include a series of cascading, I want to call them penalties, but consequences if they're not met. Some of them will be time-based. Some of them will be rights that can can distribute back to others. Some can be liquidated damage or penal, financial penalties. Those are the the, some of the dynamics that you'll see in the performance agreements. That doesn't mean that every performance agreement will have a cascading set of penalties, but but some of the the most critical ones will have some of those, I'll call them protections instead of consequences. And and that is fairly typical. Some of the types of things that you would see in the performance might use, as I said, time-based. Some of them might use number or value-based. Some might simply be that if you're not performing, it's not achieving what it needs to achieve over a period of time, then others can step in and deal with that. For instance, if the city were owner of something such as the performance venue, we're going to want to make sure we have protections to ensure that we get the value out of that project as well as the reimbursement of our investment on that.
So when we look at a a chart like this one of the revenues versus the potential debt service costs, this isn't the first, the most monumental, the largest project that you brought from ADP forward to the city, but this isn't the first one. So have we done these sorts of analyses on previous projects that have been brought to Alexandria by ADP? Or not us, we, have we had independent parties do these sorts of analyses in the past?
Absolutely. That's Kendall Taylor, Director of Finance. This this chart is actually modeled after one we did, it's probably familiar to several of you. We did a very, very similar financial feasibility analysis for the Potomac Yard Metro Station of looking at what's the revenue going to be and then where's that line. And so that financial feasibility analysis is is one of the early steps, and we do that every time we do one of these large initiatives.
So I think it's important, as we're looking at something like this, and we've done these in the past, we should know, like, what's our track record in, you know, accurately projecting future revenues from economic investments like this?
I'm happy to go.
Yeah. I was going to say, I didn't, I, that sounded a little question, a little directive. We'll take both. I would use the National Science Foundation perhaps as as a really great, and the Patent and Trademark Office as two catalysts where we probably did have charts similar to this when we were making those investments and inducements. And and both of those experiences were counting on revenue from the catalyst itself, but also the kind of spin-off activity, and both have absolutely performed. The third and probably, you know, similar in size is our project at Landmark, the former Landmark, where the city is investing in the hospital and also infrastructure along with the hospital project in order then to see a return. And that project is very much under construction right now. But the the methodology and the thought process and the assessment behind it is is almost identical to what we've done here.
Yeah. Stephanie, I was just going to add to this, too. That might be some helpful perspective. You know, the the HRNA analysis was not done in a vacuum, right? There there are three main components to this. There are the event-based revenues, right, based off the arena activity, the city incremental and the state incremental revenues. And it was a partnership of the city and their extended professionals, the state, their extended professionals, and the company, right? And so in in this circumstance, you've almost got, you've got three different buckets of of money, potential revenues, that were analyzed in their own specific context, right? A lot of great information from the company about their existing operations and what kind of revenue that is spinning off, which gives a very solid foundation for a lot of the event-based activity on the city side and looking at the proposed development, what the, you know, city-based revenues are, some of those tax generations, the the city's tax experts looking at that. And then similarly with the state and those specific revenues. So a long-winded way of saying, you know, it was not done in a vacuum, and there were a lot of thought and eyes that went in to the three big aspects that that go into the revenue projections here.
And in the past, when we've had independent firms do an analysis like this of projects that we were considering, that ADP was considering bringing to Alexandria, without, you know, violating any of the privacy agreements you had with the companies or entities we're looking at, have there ever been projects like this where y'all ran the numbers and you didn't bring them to us because they didn't pencil out?
There are, there are a few that I can think of in in my 19 years with ADP. And the, you know, the couple that I can think of did not, would not have had either the catalytic impact because there wasn't enough opportunity kind of around it, is one that I'm thinking of. And another was a use that was of high value, like would have been a great cultural fit. But but once we did the analysis, we recognized that it that it didn't actually generate a whole lot of revenue because of the the structure of the, it was it was a nonprofit entity, and the way that the real estate and and business taxes were structured, the return wasn't very strong. And so we did not move forward with those projects.
Thank you. And I ask these questions because, you know, we're taking a chart like this, it's not just important, like, that it's an independent agency that did it, that the city hired to take a dispassionate look, but there's a track record of these sorts of analyses panning out comparably to how they're projected, and a track record of us, you know, not just looking for a yes here, actually looking for real numbers to make a sober judgment over whether to bring a project forward or not. So I appreciate that detail. One or two other little areas I wanted to bring up. The Performing Arts Venue, the city would own the Performing Arts Venue, and Monumental, I presume, would be the lessee of the venue, or not necessarily? Fifty-fifty ownership, okay, fifty-fifty ownership, all right. So the city would be fifty-fifty ownership. What?
Well, not necessarily that either. I think it's to be determined.
Okay.
We we have described it as a joint venture, where at this point, the framework of our joint venture is that both parties are committing to pay to build it.
Right.
The joint venture and the and the agreements that we would, we would ink, should we move forward, would outline who operates it and how we would share the revenue. And then would include a number of the performance measures or metrics that would be required to make sure that that the asset generated the amount of activity and revenue that we need. And so those those are a little bit to be determined, should we move forward. Again, we just have sort of a framework for how we would build it and pay for it.
So that's an example of how what was announced in December is a framework, and we're working through this public process to outline those details and come to a final determination there.
That's right.
When we do do construction on the portion that city, you know, dollars would be helping to fund the construction, what of our city construction policies and labor policies would be applicable to this project?
Oh, that's a great question. And one way to think about, this is a project, it's in the city of Alexandria, your philosophies, your tenants, your approach to to labor, I mean, we've had a, we're one of the first collective bargaining, prevailing wage, living wage, you've had all of those, and that is the expectation of how a project in Alexandria is constructed. And so that that, well, those are your tenants and your ideals, and that doesn't change now.
So the elements of this project that the city is directly involved in providing funding and support for are going to, you know, we have the opportunity to reflect our values that we've, and the policies that we've put in place as a council in those elements.
That's correct.
Excellent. And thank you very much.
Okay, next up, Vice Mayor Jackson.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you all being on tonight. I did listen to most of the listening session the other night, the financial one that started the ball rolling. And I do want to ask another question concerning, I think, the question that I asked that night, only because there are a lot of people asking these types of questions, and so now's a good time to have some of these answered, if you have answers. One is, we're we're talking about revenues a lot, but the flip side of that is what what structures are tax-exempt on this footprint is what we're getting. And and to that point, if it is the arena, if it is Virginia Tech, if, you know, in terms of how much money, if it's tax-exempt, what are those structures losing us as we're building revenue on the other side, right? I know there's a pro and con type of balance with that. But also then comparatively to PTO and the National Science Foundation and even BRAC, what, when those things were tax-exempt, what did we lose in comparison to what we may be losing now before we're getting the revenues back, the generating revenues? Does that make sense? Kendall's looking at me like I think so.
Yes. Kendall, could you go, could you go to the slide that is the site plan? If you're running it? Thank you. So the area outlined in red would be the area where the land and facilities would be real estate tax exempt, because those would be owned by this new state authority. So it would it would be a governmental entity. And the rest of the project, the blue, the green, the would be taxable, real estate taxable properties. Those are, those are private development sites. The reason that I think people are rightfully asking, you know, we talk a lot about how how re-real estate taxes are a major source of revenue for the city. The reason that this project pencils, and frankly, this is one of the things, right, that one of the founding questions we had when we engaged HRNA, how could a property that goes off the tax rules still be so net positive? And the reason is because of all of those other revenue sources that we've been talking about that get generated on this site. So to make a comparison, an apartment building generates real estate tax revenue for us, but it houses people, and those people require services. And those people require services, and we provide services for them. Those people don't generate sales tax, they don't generate admissions tax, they don't generate meals and sales, meals tax as well. They, they don't come and park and pay for parking every single day. And so, so you think about, this use is so specific and so unique that the uses, the use taxes that are generated it, that are generated by it far surpass any real estate tax that we would ever get from an alternative use. And so that is why the catalyst impact here is so strong. We are generating enough money without real estate tax on the red parcel to pay for the debt that we need to take on to be a partner, to bring this to bear. And then all of the revenues, real estate, use, et cetera, on the remainder of the 70-acre site are all net new and net, and net, the definition of net, to the city and the state. Do not need to be pledged to this project.
Just to follow up, so I would not term, there's not lost revenue when you compare what revenue we get from the site today and what revenue we project to get in the future. There's no loss to that, there is a net positive. And that's really, really important. The other aspect is, we talk about, quote, "the base case," which wasn't just vacant land, it was what we, we believe to be a level of development that would likely occur without any city investment. And that did generate a certain, a certain level of net revenue. When you compare that with this project, the revenue streams are dramatically different. One is substantially higher than the base case. So what does that mean? If, if it all works the way that we would anticipate it working, that that net revenue that is, that this project would far surpass the net revenue that is generated on the project today, or generated by a scenario of future development that is likely to happen without the city's investment, those dollars allow us to pay for the services that we are providing today and in the future. So it's, it truly is not a lost revenue, it's a question of levels of revenue. And then the net positive here is much more substantial than the, the net revenue that is li- that we project to happen in the future.
I, I understand that, and I appreciate that. I think people are, are really wanting to deal in real numbers when they're hearing four million and seven million and 12, excuse me, not million, billions, four billion, seven billion, equalling 12 billion. So when we're throwing out those numbers and the projections, they also wanna hear the numbers of what these structures may cost, right? So we're not giving numbers to that. So I think that's where the questions lie. So that is my, I'm, okay.
I'm sorry, Deanna.
No, go ahead.
We, we actually are, the costs associated with the, this potential project is factored into the, the, when we talk about revenue and expenditures, the net revenue is revenue, gross revenues minus the expenses that we expect to have to cover as it relates to any type of development, but particularly this type of development. So that's, those, those are factored in to the conversation. That is factored into how we evaluate this project. And to Stephanie's point, some of the projects that I know she's looked at over her couple decades that did not make sense, probably because either the revenue generated minus the expenses didn't factor in a large rate of return, it wasn't worth doing. And I think, so when we talk about revenue and expenses, we looked at both of those, much like we would look at those when we think about budgetary issues or our own financial positions in our households, you look at both pieces. So that has all been factored into this, and the model was not just a revenue model or an expenditure model, it was a combined effort of both.
So what is the number? I mean, we keep going back with expenditures, I mean, like, do we have a number? Is it like, how many, how many millions of dollars is that arena?
Two billion dollars. The, no, $2 billion is the, is the, is the cost, is the cost to construct the arena, the parking deck, the office building, the performing arts venue, and the onsite infrastructure required to bring that to bear. It's $2 billion, and that is what, that is what we are, are financing through a mixture of bonds and direct cash from the company and the city's contribution.
Okay. Thank you. So, and then in comparison, what were those government entities of, I mean, you may not have this on hand tonight, but that's what people are asking because that's what they can grasp. The, the, all the, all the paperwork, all, all the numbers on paper, people aren't grasping that. They're able to say, this is what this was, and this is what this was in the past. So they can compare that way to see if we're getting our money's worth in different ways. The arena is completely different from those other structures, and we realize that. But that's what they're asking about because those are the things that are not on our books, so to speak. I know John's giving me a look, but.
Sure. Well, to clarify.
When we're talking about tax-exempt real estate, and then who's in them? So you're saying, okay, so like BRAC and, and National Science Foundation, PTO, those are government workers in those build, or one is nonprofit, but the others are, are government workers. But the arena is not either of those.
Yeah, so, but so let me clarify.
Okay, please.
National Science Foundation, yeah, National Science Foundation and Patent and Trademark Office, those are government leases. Those are real estate, those are not tax-exempt buildings. Those buildings are taxable. The, the Defense Department, BRAC 133 at Mark Center, is off the tax rolls because the federal government purchased that land and built that building. But, but the first two are, are leases, and government leases are not tax-exempt. What they don't pay, and Kendall, I might need to phone a friend here, I don't believe they pay business taxes, like, they don't, you know, they don't file, they might file for a business license, but they're, we're not collecting business license revenue because it's a government entity.
I believe that is true.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. To go on a totally different topic.
We do people.
Our public si- did you, okay, I didn't know if you were still answering, okay. One of the other topics we've been hearing about, and of course was written up in the paper yesterday or today, was our, the public safety program, and how we're gonna go about funding that and recruiting for that. And I know the city manager mentioned earlier that all of these things, these types of programs are, are rolled into what we're expecting to pay for in the operating cost. So how are we, I guess, how are we reconciling that we are going to have this public safety program of sorts, safety and security for the arena, and being able to use a regional type of law enforcement agency, or a bunch of agencies for that? And putting it into our operating costs, but are, do we know how much that will be in our operating costs when we're adjusting, making adjustments for that?
Yeah. So first of all, the article today was inaccurate, or yesterday was inaccurate. We have many arenas and stadiums, when you deal with public safety and public services related to the events and related to this type of facility, use, use a very common model where it's, you draw from secondary employment from the entire region. Where I came from, we did this very effectively. It puts no burden on the existing public safety apparatus that supports the existing community. That's, that's sacred. You don't, don't do that. The Public Safety and Service Plan would look at everything from the security inside and outside the building. It would look at some of the neighborhood protection elements such as parking enforcement and some directional traffic control. It would look at, you know, some of the elements about how to take care during a weather situation and things like that. And that is a combined effort between the authority, the operator of the facility, and the city. But it is a regional model, so the strain on any one entity in the city, whether that's a fire personnel, a sheriff personnel, or a police personnel, is, it does not exist because what we're talking about is secondary employment. We are still servicing the entire city with the appropriate resources. This is supplemental to that. And because, especially in this region where we are so significant as it relates to public safety officers, for instance, that pool is much larger than if we were a standalone community that didn't have that same apparatus. And so the way that works is we will enter into agreement with Monumental Sports Entertainment with the city and the authority, and that will spell out exactly what we do and don't do. Part of the reason we, we can't complete that is we don't know the design of the building, we don't know some of the, the traffic components yet, as well as a couple of elements. We have the framework, we have the outline, but the cost structure and how it would work and the extent of that, we, we can't get all the way there until we get a little further along in the project.
Thank you. And you brought up an excellent point about cost structure, and it's not just for that particular program. And I, you know, I don't wanna play fantasy football here or anything like that, but eventually in, in the coming weeks here, as we continue to discuss this, instead of just throwing around the, the 12 billion here, 7 billion, is there a way that we can actually get a, like, a expected line item budget of things that, how much things will cost in this particular project? Like, we keep putting the numbers there, but is there a way to go whole draft, right? Not, not anything that's been approved by us or anything, but just so we can get everyone, our residents included, our heads wrapped around how much money this is and what the cost is for certain programs within this project?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we can provide some ranges and some categories. Some of the detail won't exist until we finalize agreements and we see how that's all gonna work. But, but I would tell you that the model that we used factored in cost of city services, much like we would for any development, and we use those numbers in terms of fiscal impact. And we have that. And that's where, taking that approach, which is our, our cost approach, that generates the net revenue that we've been describing. But we can, we can distill that down a little bit, I think, and that might be helpful.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I just, I guess, having now done a number of presentations, and I know there's, this is a lot of detail and a lot of complications, I wanna make sure that a clear takeaway is that the numbers that we are reporting are net. So we're not, we have calculated what it will cost in additional trash pickup, in additional road maintenance. Like, that is what a fis- the fiscal impact model did for us. It's, it, it recognized that, yes, there will be more people using certain things, and we have taken those costs, and the numbers that we are reporting to you are net positive. And so I wanna make sure that, that people listening, whether it's residents or press, don't walk away thinking that we're just talking about how much money this thing is going to make, and we don't know what it's gonna cost us. That is what we modeled, is what it will cost us, and then we guaranteed, or we, we are, we are projecting that this is going to be net positive to the city. Like, we are taking into account all of the new additional services that we will provide, that, that, that is what a fiscal impact model does. And all of the inputs, I think one of our colleagues mentioned this, our tax professionals put those inputs into this model. That, that is what this firm does. It comes and it gets the very specific costs of, how much does it cost us to send someone to the library? Like, it, it models all of those things, and we have backed that out. So I just wanna make sure that we are crystal clear that we're not just waiting for a big number of costs that's gonna come, those have been accounted into the math. And what we are saying is, this project is net positive for the city.
Councilmember Gary?
Gotta inject a little bit of laughter, so. So I, I think that new slide is, is very popular. So if you don't mind going back to, to the new slide one more time. To, to Councilmember Bagley's point of kind of asking the same question over and over again in a different way, forgive me if I'm doing that, but I, I think it is important to do so. You know, when, when we talk about the number of events that we would like to see, do we have any analysis or could we do some analysis? You know, if it's, if we don't get to 220 events, what if there's only 100? You know, what if it's 75% of that number? What if it's 25% of that number? I don't know if we've run any of that yet, but is that a possibility?
We have done some of that.
So.
Oh, go ahead, Jamie.
I was gonna say, Ty, I think you might have that available. Yeah, we've run some sensitivities, again, with the state's looking the same thing as well. We ran some numbers to look if, if we just had the Caps and the Wizards playing and no other facilities or no other projects. I think, Ty, the, the coverage level was still above 1.3 times coverage.
That's right. That's right. I mean, the, the state had looked at a number of kind of doom and gloom scenarios as well. I, I think that's a good one, but, you know, that's effectively, what, 80-some events in the arena? And it was still over the yellow line in terms of this, the, the, the total revenues shown here.
A real, a real kind of example for us to think about where, how we, we essentially chose the kind of conservative path every single time, the 80 events assumes that neither one of these professional sports teams makes the playoffs for 35 years. And I don't, let, let, let's all.
Let's not, no, 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 let's not put that jinx there. No, no, no.
Let's not put that, let's not put that into the, but, but, but what that means is, anytime there's a playoff game, or we're able to, you know, to attract that kind of, you know, extended season, those are all additional revenues. So we didn't assume, you know, a lot of people would take an average, they'd look at a team's performance, and they'd make some assumptions, and then put that into the programming. We didn't do that. And so, so that's just an example of, of the kind of conservativeness that we ran when we were, you know, kind of looking at these various sensitivities and scenarios.
And just, 'cause I think that was a really important, those two points are really, really important, just wanna stress. So what you just heard was, in terms of coverage of the debt, as long as the teams are playing, that debt is not just covered, but is over-covered. Without anything else, as long as the Wizards and the Capitals play at that arena, that covers the debt plus extra revenue.
Mr. City Manager, can you say that one more time?
One more time. The, the point about.
Just go ahead and say it, play there.
As long as the Wizards and the Capitals play at the arena in Alexandria, the debt is fully covered plus additional revenue.
Thank you. And, and I mean, I think, you know, these are really important points, and this is a very complex, complicated deal. And it, I, what I, what I would ask from the community is a little bit of patience for us to be able to get all of this out there, so that you, as a community member, can look at it in a more informed way. Because I understand how this rolled out, there was, wasn't a lot of information, and we've been trying to get it all out, and, and to the point that Councilmember Bagley brought up with, with the employment and wanting to see more of a breakdown, and Mayor, Mayor Wilson saying, yeah, those numbers are there. These are all things, there's some stuff that exists, there's some stuff that we're working on, but we're, again, this is, this is gonna be a long process, we wanna make sure that all of this gets out there. But we also wanna highlight some of these points. And as another example, you know, I, I was in Richmond yesterday for Virginia Transit Association Lobby Day, and, you know, while I was talking to one of the chief of staffs, they had given, they had gotten a presentation about the arena, they, they had talked to somebody else that had talked about it. But one of the slides. But one of the slides, the one that we actually compare the deal that we're proposing for this arena to a couple of other deals that have occurred across the country, they never, they never saw that slide. They never paid attention to the part at the bottom that showed what the big difference is. So I think a lot of what my colleagues and I are trying to do is to highlight some of these things and elevate them for everyone's awareness. Okay, so thank you for that one. Oh, did you want to say something? Okay. So the other question, so in, in my experience, and this is just going off the top of my head, I can't think of an NBA or NHL team that has necessarily stayed in one place for, for 40 years, right? And the NFL, no, they moved. They moved to Staples Center.
Oh, not in cities.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Say, besides, you know, NFL and MLB, because they have a longer history, and they need bigger stadiums, whatever, what have you. So I, my, my question then becomes, because I want us to be prepared for any scenario, and I know, and thank you, City Manager, for bringing this up, that we have several protections in place, but in a scenario where the team folds in 10 years, or they move in 20 years, what, do we have numbers for some of that to say, okay, what are our, what are our financial projections for 10, 15, 20, in case a team does leave for whatever reason?
I, I think we can do that calculation, but I, you know, the non-relocation agreement is incredibly powerful tool. It's not just you can leave and pay a penalty. It, it is a legal contract that has, that this is, this is one that has very, very, very significant consequences.
Protections.
Protections. And, and you learn from previous agreements around the sports where there was some outs, there were some gaps in how that works. So as we think of that, I think our scenario would be incredibly rare and very different than what you might have seen with a team deciding to try to move on from, say, Seattle to Oklahoma City and things like that. In our case, with our non-relocation agreement and the provisions in that, those would be strong enough that pretty much to withstand the possibility of that. And that's really what our goal is there.
No, I totally understand, you know, not probable, but still possible regardless of the low probability. Like I said, I just want us to be prepared for all scenarios.
Yeah, and you do, I mean, there are, there's, while we talk about this project in some familiarity, I mean, there's, there's a risk to any economic development project. And certain things could happen, but you try to protect against that with thinking about the level at which the project could benefit the community too. That's sort of the risk reward.
And City Manager, one, one other item that I think is something you just said triggered me to say this, because we are talking about this, not, not that we're taking anything for granted, I do want to point out that one of the reasons this opportunity is so consequential is because it is two franchise teams. And, and I think just Councilman Aguirre's question, you know, two teams gives us two times the amount of economic impact, but it also makes it almost two times stickier, right? When you think about any sort of movements and the ability to, you know, two different professional leagues, two different sets of fans, and, and so the power of that two is something that is very unique about this project, especially when you compare it to other moves. There, it has been said that there have not, there has not been a time when two teams have been able, have been available to move at the same time. Someone has questioned how the Caps and Wizards made it from Maryland to DC, so maybe that's the last time something like that happened. But I don't want us to take for granted how impactful and the two-team dynamic is for us and how valuable it is.
See, that's why they ask these questions, so we can hear something like that. Thank you, Ms. Landrum. So next question that I have is around taxes. And this is, you know, this is what we're paying back for debt relief. And I'm not asking for, for a response right now, but can we start doing some analysis? If this is playing out the way we wanted to, what does this mean for the tax rate for Alexandria? Can we maintain it at where we are currently and still pay for everything and more? Or can we potentially reduce the tax rate and still pay for everything? Right? I think those are some very important questions that some of our residents want to know, and I think is also when we start talking, it's, when we talk about our tax base and the imbalance between residential and commercial, not everybody understands that. And that's, and that's a, a long story that we have to tell to get people to from point A to point B. But if you tell someone, hey, your tax rate's going down 10 cents over the next 30 years, that's one sentence, and that, that gets you to A to B in a hurry. So I'd like to see some information on that at some point, and I know that's not an easy one, so.
Well, there, there is a way to talk about that. I, I would never like to tell people what's going to happen to their tax rate. That is out of my realm of power. But one of the things we try to talk about is the, the value of a penny on the tax rate is about $5 million. And so anytime we can either generate $5 million in revenue or identify $5 million in savings, whether it's through refinancing our debt, that's a way that we have prior to losing that ability, we could generate more money by just rearranging how we had issued our debt. So anytime we can find $5 million, that is $5 million that isn't required in your real estate tax rate. And so where we're trying to generate revenue from people who are coming to hockey games, people are coming to concerts, that is new money coming into the city that doesn't need to be derived from a residential homeowner or a business owner paying real estate taxes. So $5 million is a, is a number to keep in your head that where you can get $5 million, you don't have to get it in your real estate tax rate.
I greatly appreciate that, that explanation. But again, like I had, I had mentioned, right, like A to B, right? And I, and I'm not, this is not a knock at all, Director Taylor, I, DCM Taylor, this is, yes, I 100% with you. I just want to be able to, boom, right? Here is something, right? Like A to B as quickly as possible. Because once we get into some of the explanation, I, I think about the, the youth that we're here, it's like sometimes our attention spans are too, are too long. And I think that goes for adults as well, but, but thank you, yes. And then the last one that I wanted to bring up was around tangible numbers, things that our community can grasp. And, and Ms. Landrum, I know we, we had a meeting about this as well, but, you know, when we talk about some of this tax revenue that gets generated, you know, is that an elementary school, and how much is that, right? Is that, you know, is that an additional firehouse that we build? How much money is it to the Affordable Housing Fund? And I know we've made some projections on that one. Is it, is it money for, you know, consolidating another building? Is it for purchasing some land? I, I don't know, but just having tangible things that our residents can relate to, because $12 billion, that's a big number, and, and people, they have difficulty kind of wrapping their head around that. So the more tangible we can make that, the more that our community can kind of grasp those individual things. And I know this is something that we'll, that we'll work on. I just want to reemphasize that point, you know, it's, it's kind of the visualization of that A to B thing, right? It's like, this money means this. So I think, I think that's all I have, but just again, want to thank you all for all the work on this, because like, like we've all been saying, this is a very complicated project, there's a lot of moving pieces, and, and we're going to try and make this conversation as, as easy as we can, once we continue on our engagement path.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Aguirre, Councilman Chapman, and Councilman Gaskin.
Thank you. Couple of things, we've already mentioned protections and the fact that this is something that's going to be included. I just want to kind of say this for the public record in terms of, you know, deals that we've done. Ms. Landrum, while you've been here, we've normally had kind of protections and clawbacks be part of our standard procedure, correct?
Yes, and, and I also thank you for, for, for teeing this up unplanned. Most of the other deals that we have done are for a much shorter term. You know, National Science Foundation was a 15-year lease, Patent and Trademark Office, 20, 20-year, year lease. And so we are talking about a, a commitment for, you know, in, in, in that last case, double the timeframe. But yes, every one of our deals that we are in, if we induce them, there is a clawback provision if, or, or, or consequences, is that the word we're using? For not meeting performance.
Perfect. The next thing I wanted to just mention or check on was for the concert venue and the parking garage, we are not going to be actually running those. And is it not, I'm assuming there's not going to be a city employee that's running those? That's going to be a, some type of contract or?
Yeah, we, we would not anticipate running either one of those.
Okay. The question I have about the parking lot, even though I know there's details to be worked out about how it operates, is that going to end up being, let's say, if there's no games that day and kind of a lack of activity, is that still going to be a, a functioning parking lot, or is that really going to be kind of reserved for event?
No, I, I think that when there is not the use of that parking lot for a specific event or, say, a performance venue, or in portions of the day when it's available, it will be a public, publicly accessible garage for a fee.
Correct, okay.
Stephanie, that's accurate, right?
That, yeah, that's correct. That is, that is absolutely correct. And, and I would anticipate, I mean, one of the things that will be worked out in the detail is there, I forget what the term is, adjustable pricing, right? So the goal is for it to be used and for it to be generating revenue for the sports authority.
That's perfect. I just want to check and make sure as we talk construction, you know, something we talk about regularly with our, our buildings and what we're doing with our capital improvements program, we're building in some of those costs for any kind of fluctuations in the market and things of that nature.
Yeah, there's, the construction contracts will have contingencies and some, some things like that, some guarantees. And right now, we're in a market that I think we've, we've probably been fairly conservative, so this is a good time if the project does move forward. But yeah, there's protections in those.
I would, I would share the, the thoughts of my, my colleague, Mr. Aguirre, around tangible numbers, not, not that we're, not that we're far off from what we're doing. I think as, you know, you talked about, Mr. Taylor, when you talk about, you know, a certain amount of money, it's based on, you know, what it means to the tax rate. I think if, if there's a way to kind of translate it into that, I, I think that'd be helpful, because that's honestly, we've, that's become council speak. That's how we talk about a, a lot of things based on the tax rate and what that means to the tax rate. And so, you know, $12 billion or certain amount of money for this or that, I think would be, would definitely be helpful for people being able to, to catch it. I don't think, in some of the conversations I've seen, I don't know if it's, if it's sticking, just because they're such big numbers over a long period of time. I think it was pretty clear, you know, when first reports came out about how much DC might lose, you know, it was 25 million a year, right? And so that was a very tangible number for people to, to kind of understand what that was and how much that was. I think we're talking billions over a longer period of time, and so I think that we start to lose folks there, or they pull out their calculator and try to do the math. So thank you.
We can definitely work at making it meaningful numbers and comparable numbers, as well as potentially kind of taking that billion and just getting it something to something that's relative to people.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Gaskin, Vice Mayor Jackson.
Okay. A few last questions. The first one is.
Questions, you said?
Yes, that I'll be.
I thought you said question. You said one, you said one final question is what you said.
Questions with an S. But you have to expect, I mean, this is a thing that everyone's talking about, never stop talking about. The first is just, The Washington Post article has talked about this as the most expensive stadium deal. Stephanie, can you just speak to that? Is that true? If so, why? Why not?
So, so I would say this, every, every, these projects don't happen very often. I forget what the number is, but I want to say it's, you know, it's 50 or something. I mean, there's only so many of these that exist, these arenas and, and sports facilities, because this is, this is a business model where, you know, it is a super regional draw, right? There are only so many teams in these various leagues. And so by default, these projects don't get built. There aren't, you know, there aren't multiples that get built every single year. Moving forward, the next facility will always likely be the most expensive facility ever built because they are so unique, because they are so specialized, et cetera. So yes, it is the most expensive one built. And then back to my previous point, this is not, this is being compared to facilities that house only one team in one league. And so this is being designed and built to accommodate two leagues who, one plays on ice, one plays on, on hardwood, right? So, so you think about all of those costs that, that get worked into the design and build of a facility that is so specialized. And then as we've been talking about, sports is just one piece of what this facility will be able to provide. And so you, again, think about the cost and design, et cetera. So it is an extremely specialized, unique and high-tech facility, and it will be the most expensive until the next one is, is likely built somewhere else in North America.
And just to add to that, just to give you an example, Barclay Center in Brooklyn, I think it was built a couple of years ago. It's over $1 billion cost, and it houses one, it houses one NBA team. It does not how, it does not house a NHL team, from what I remember. So I just give you an example. So while it's, these are expensive projects, we're not talking about magnitude of 1 million to 2 million, you're talking about significant dollars, but they're in, they're within what you would see over time in terms of years of construction.
Given the financing structure proposed here, what are the implications to the city's AAA bond rating?
I would like to answer that. So remember, one of the things we've been talking about all along is kind of guiding principles, and that has been, since we started talking about this, one of the key principles of that nothing we are doing would jeopardize that. That is also Davenport are the people who have helped navigate our rating and our, our discussions with the rating agencies. So everything we've been doing is with an eye toward what are the questions they're going to ask us, and is there anything we're doing that, that could jeopardize that? And I will turn that over to the people that help us get there also.
Very good. No, the, you know, a lot of the things that you're asking, and I think your citizens are, are asking, are things that we are also concerned about to ensure that we're, we're putting ourselves in the best position to obviously maintain our AAA credit rating. And again, it's the same sort of thing we did, I'll revert back to it, but it's, it's a similar size commitment on, on behalf of the city, and that's Potomac Yard. And that's something that we funded, not using tax increment financing of this type, which we could have, but we chose to use our general obligation pledge the same way we fund fire, schools, et cetera, because it provided us the lowest, the lowest cost of borrowing. And that was a $375 million commitment. And in this case, our, our commitment relative to the, the tax-supported debt is we've capped it at $350 million. The state is also capping their commitment at $350 million of, of debt as well. And so that's not out of the realm of what we've done, obviously, in the past, we think. And then again, we're going to be talking to the rating agencies about a lot of the things we talked about today, and that is the coverage levels in particular of the, the tax-supported debt, and why we think those are of the level that, that are, we, we talk about it as a, as a contingent, contingent moral obligation, right? There's a contingent that we may, may be responsible for this, but we want to show and demonstrate to them, the same way we're talking to you, and the same way we talk to your citizens, that we don't think that that, that contingent obligation is ever going to come. that we don't think that that contingent obligation is ever going to come to fruition. And that's because we've got two times to four times coverage on the debt that we're supporting and we're in with the state at the same level of commitment.
There's another aspect of the conversation that we have with the rating agencies. We talk about the, kind of the fiscal side, but half of our conversation, probably more than that, is our tax base, our revenue. Where is our revenue coming from? What are we doing to expand our tax base? We take them on a kind of a visual tour of the city. We call it the Development Crescent. And so when we've been talking about our AAA rating, we need to keep in mind that half of this story is going to be talking about what we are doing to generate revenue and to expand commercial and economic development in the city of Alexandria. So there are two sides of that AAA rating conversation.
Thank you. Sorry, just taking a quick note. The other question I had, it's not a direct financing, but it came up several times at the community conversation on Sunday, but what factors are influencing the timing and pace of this decision? I think numbers were thrown out from our other representatives that, you know, normally this would take 18 months. Can you slow it down? So can you just talk about like what factors are influencing the pace of this?
I can start. There are a handful of things. Number one, Monumental has a lease expiring in their current facility in 2027. And so they were in the market looking at a stay-in-place or a new option. So that's how a lot of economic development projects start, is the company comes to us because there's some sort of timeline on their end. So that's number one. Number two, the site that we're talking about during the course of our conversations, the market and other tenants who are interested in being there kind of presented themselves. And there, the site will become unavailable should we not move forward with this project. The current major tenant anchor there has expressed interest and actually signed a lease to stay in place for the next 20 years. And so the property owner is, was open to this opportunity and wanted to give us some time to explore, and so they negotiated a window during which we could explore this project. And we are in that window right now, but they're not going to hold and forego the opportunity to have the site and have somebody pay to use the site for other purposes forever. And so there is a window there. And then I think the third piece is, because we are pursuing an authority, the creation of an authority, that requires an action by General Assembly, and the General Assembly meets right now, you know, this time of the year, every year. And they are, and I don't mean this pejoratively, but they're not in session like you all are all year long, taking meetings and making decisions. And so we are working through their process of setting up the authority, which would be, you know, kind of the legal entity. I think for the community's perspective, what we're deciding or what the General Assembly would be deciding right now is the framework for how, or maybe whatever the next progression of framework is, would be the structure of how we would finance and build this. But if that moves forward and if we as a city decide we want to continue to pursue this, we will then move into a process of many meetings, discussions, decisions, hearings, conversations about how it's designed and some of the details and nuances of some of these agreements related to how the facility would operate and how it would fit into our community. And that process would, you know, play out certainly over the course of this entire year.
Thank you. And then last question is kind of a data request, but for like historical context, is there any way we can pull what promises were made to the district as part of the Capital One development in terms of jobs and projected revenue and just how they've delivered or not delivered over time?
I am sure we could, we could do some research into that. I guess it was, it was probably 25-plus years ago now, and it was a different owner, but I bet there's some, there's some press and there's some documents in the public realm that we could find.
That'd be helpful, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Jackson.
Now it's two questions, but it's really quick, too. So to go off of, we were talking about the timeframe of what is at Potomac Yard now in the 20 years, and they're giving us a window of time. So we're in the window of time, is what I've heard. Do we have an end to that window of time that we really need to be concerned about? For this other thing to come to fruition? What is it? Do we know?
The window of time that we, that the property owner has given us was to make an announcement about that we were going to pursue this project and start the process with the General Assembly by the end of the calendar year. So we have done that. If there's no action by the General Assembly and we don't set up the kind of the authority that allows us then to proceed with financing, et cetera, the window will close. I guess there's not, we have been, we are operating under the very clear understanding that if, like this can't wait till next year for us to do this. Both, you know, both from Monumental, they need to make a decision about their future, but also then for, from the property's perspective, they can't be sitting for a whole other year while we wait and then go through the next General Assembly process. So I think realistically, we need to continue to see forward movement from the bodies who are making decisions.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, if I can jump in for just one second. Stephanie, can you rhyme people with the timetable was from announcement to decision on the Amazon decision?
Yeah, so we announced Amazon, the Amazon HQ2 and the idea of the Virginia Tech Innovation Campus, November of 2018. And then the required legislation and performance agreements, et cetera, went through that General Assembly session that started that January. The General Assembly voted on it, and then performance agreements and all the, you know, the kind of sausage of the deal was signed in like April, May timeframe of the following year of 2019.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Jackson.
Thank you. And the other question I had was, since we haven't really discussed the neighbor here, what role is Virginia Tech playing in any of this?
Sure. Virgin, yes, absolutely. Virginia Tech was identified, you know, as an immediate neighbor and stakeholder and has been having conversations with Monumental about partnership. Part of what we're going to talk about in our listening session this week, we're going to have a representative from Virginia Tech on, as well as a representative from Monumental. And so we'll start to really, you know, accept ideas, but also share some thoughts about their partnership. I think Virginia Tech should take a lot of credit for helping to attract Monumental. The vision in their building an innovation campus was to attract corporate partners who would be hiring STEM graduates. And Monumental, I've said this now a number of times, Monumental is really, people assume or think about some really athletic and tall employees. That's what conjures up when you mention the company. But there are 600-plus people who can't dunk or shoot a goal, who are actually technologists, data scientists, other sorts of professionals. And so their partnership with Virginia Tech is one, you know, kind of exactly what we envisioned when we brought Virginia Tech here to Alexandria. And so I think, I think they see that opportunity and they're working on ways that they could partner. I think the second thing, not to steal everyone's thunder, and I want everyone to tune into the listening section this week, we knew that when we brought Virginia Tech, that we wanted to see a meaningful role for them to play in pipeline, starting with our public school system. And I know that they have been doing a lot of that, but they have big ambitions. And so think about, I want us, you know, all to be thinking about what does a corporate partner, an innovation partner like Virginia Tech in our public school system, what are the opportunities that are presented, both in programming, but also kind of, you know, in facilities? So the long-winded way of saying that Virginia Tech is absolutely at the table is excited, I think, about this opportunity to have a corporate neighbor that is very aligned with a lot of the things that they're working on.
And that's wonderful to hear, and I know I've had those same conversations. I just have one concern, and I don't know if anyone has been talking about this, which is if we have the two teams at the arena, but we also have graduate classes going on at Virginia Tech's Innovation Campus, and they all start at the same time, what is happening with, you know, we're already going to have infrastructure issues and traffic issues, I'm sure. So is there a certain parking lot that they will be going into, the graduate students versus who's going into the arena, so that they are getting to classes on time while others are trying to stress out and get to their seats at the arena? Just things to think about. I don't know if those have been talked about.
Thank you for those. We will make sure that our traffic analysis and transportation work that's being done addresses that issue.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Bagley.
Only because I don't want to contribute to the impression that there isn't full information on something I brought up. I asked about the 30,000 jobs breakdown. On page six of the financial analysis is a breakdown. It's still a fairly broad one. It's construction jobs and full-time equivalent long-term jobs, but it is there, people want to see, and to the extent we can start further breaking those down, it would be great. And to the Vice Mayor's credit, I'm glad you brought up Virginia Tech, because I want to point out, that building is an environmentally sustainable, groundbreaking, you know, thing that exists in Potomac Yard. They're going to expect the same of their neighbors. So kudos for that.
Okay, are there, I'm not even going to say it. So we're concluding this discussion at this point for tonight. Obviously, we have a long time of discussion ahead of us, and I appreciate my colleagues' questions for our staff, and thank you to our staff. And yes, we do, we do. Thank you, thank you for our staff.